No, I got nothing.
Good morning. All right, good morning, everyone. Glad to see everybody here. It's July fifteenth, Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to call it orders this time. And if you would mind, Slade doing the indication.
I hope you would work prayer. Father, thank you for the privilege that we have to come before you before we ever get started. Or to take just a moment to acknowledge that we need your presence with us, your power, your wisdom, the discernment that you bring and give us, Father, the peace, the highest of all understanding. All of that we require and we request, Father, humbly. I pray, Father, that these men would have their minds focused on the task at hand today, that they would see issues that need to be confronted, that they would understand what is in the best interest of all of our citizens, that they would be encouraged, Lord, that their service is not avenged, that they will feel a sense of purpose and accomplishment when we conclude here today. I pray, Father, that you would continue to protect our community, Father, you keep us safe, and that the men and women that you've called to provide that protection for us, Lord, I pray that you will keep them safe and bring them home in the day of the cross.
Amen.
Amen. All right. We have no public comments, I think, Dennis.
The ones that have signed in are here for public hearings, so we don't have a public comment.
Okay, all right. All right, have a motion approved. Old business. Most approve?
Yes.
Most approve by Steve, second by Brad. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed? Consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Steve.
Second.
Second by Daniel. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed? So Caroline's not here.
I'll do it. I'm, uh, I'll make a motion on items A, B, and C to approve for Caroline. They're, um, public notices, it looks like, a chargeback on a pin that's there. And then item C is two other pins that don't belong to the current owner. So I'll make a motion to approve items A, B, and C.
All right, motion approved by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? John Sullivan's not here. Who would like to fill in for Mr. John? Who we got?
I burned all my powder on Caroline.
I'll take it.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, item A under the tax assessors section is petitions for change of assessment on the 2020 real and personal property assessment rule.
So, uh...
Most approved by Jay.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed?
All right, and item B is to request authority to pay the registration fee in the amount of $550 for Tanisha Ely to attend the IAAO course 101, Fundamentals of Real Property Appraisal, and, uh, at Mississippi State in Starkville, and pay her travel-related expenses and authority. And just so you know, this will, this is one of the classes that qualifies for a raise in the next fiscal year.
Okay. If successfully passed.
Correct.
Okay.
Is this her first time thinking? We don't know.
I can't answer that.
First time for what, did you ask?
That she took it.
To this, take this class. She's taking problems.
Do we pay if they go back and, so let's say she, let's say she didn't fail, but say I took this course and I failed it, would you pay for it again?
There's no policy that prohibits us from paying twice.
But we, have we done that in the past?
I think in the past, we made that.
So we would continue to pay it until she passed it?
I think that's unless you specifically state and establish a policy. Keep in mind that like official office can, can have a policy that contradicts that. Keep that in mind, so we'll have to address that. But the request is being made of this board to reimburse or to pay for this in advance. I think you can state a policy. If you want reimbursement or payment ahead of time for classes, and it's a second or third try at it, those will be on the applicant or some other party.
But this is budgeted out of his budget, right? I mean, he, he's got it budgeted for.
There's a budget line item for this item.
Under his office?
Yes. Now, whether there's funds in there right now for that specific item.
Well, what if there's not? Didn't come out of the Board of Supervisors, I mean, he does it, right?
Right. He's overall got the money to put it forward.
Sure. All right.
Let's, can I, but before you put it out there, Jared, on this one, I think it's a little bit late in the day to say, well, if you've already been, we're not gonna pay for it, the second or third or fourth. But I think we should entertain that and might put it on the next agenda, that that's something to discuss, that we pay for a class one time, one per.
It, it, it's on my long list of, I want to address at some point.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion approved by Daniel. Second by Brad. Any more discussion? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed? All right, Ms. Harrison.
Uh, got discussion of potential action to install a stop sign in Live Oak subdivision. This is a three-rate crossing that has no stop sign in it. And, uh, we see the need to put one there.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved by, um, Brad, second by Daniel. I'm just curious, why do we even have to have it on here?
You, you have to put it on the board agenda when you add a stop sign in a flat in subdivision, Jared, or even on...
We've never, never ever been one there.
No. It's a, it's a long straightaway. I think it'd control the traffic a little better in subdivision.
Good luck.
It'll be a three-way stop where it'll be installed.
Good luck, they'll leave a stop still. All right, uh, motion second. No more discussion, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay?
Thank you.
Ms. Craig Slade.
Yep.
All right, Ms. Slade, you ready to rock?
I think the first two items, items A and B, can be for setting of a public hearing on July the 29th at 9:00 a.m. for both of those matters. If I can get a motion on A and B.
I'll make that motion, set, set it July 29th.
All right, motion set to public hearing by, uh, Brad, second by Steve. All in favor say aye. All opposed?
Items C, D, E, and F will also to be, will also be to set public hearings for August 2 at 9:00 a.m. if I could have a motion on C, D, E, and F.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Okay, motion set to public hearings for all these, uh, B, D, E, and F. Uh, by Brad, second by Steve. All in favor say aye. All opposed?
Ms. President, item G is a public hearing on the John McKay rezoning request at Old Highway 80, Morton Rankin Road and Sprayberry Road. This is a District 4 parcel property. Mr. McKay is seeking to rezone a 36.1 acre parcel from A2 to RE1. He is proposing development of a seven-lot subdivision in the Clarksburg, called Clarksburg Acres. All the lots will be five-plus acres. The proposed minimum heated and cooled square footage is 1,850 square feet. The property fronts on Old Highway 80 and on Morton Rankin Road and on Sprayberry Road. Property was posted. Notice of the hearing was published in the paper and the surrounding property owners to, within 160 feet were notified by certified mail as required by our ordinance. We received one call, and that call was not opposed to the rezoning request. When we undertake a rezoning, gentlemen, and I'm gonna try to make this a, a standard operating procedure for us in these public hearing situations. Our criteria for rezoning are that there are really three basic reasons why property should be considered for rezoning first, which does not apply and almost never applies, is that there was a mistake in the way that the property was originally zoned. We see that from time to time, but that's an infrequent reason for our rezoning. Most of the time, when we have a mistake in the original zoning, your, your staff is actually bringing that rezoning request to you for correction. There are other reasons. Two primary other reasons are that there has been a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood to such an extent that it justifies the reclassification of the property. The second demonstration that kind of goes with that is that there is a need, a public need for the rezoning activity. That will be in all rezoning class. Those, that is a standard operating procedure in each of the rezonings. So Mr. McKay has made his request, and through his application is intending to assert that there is a change in the character of the neighborhood and that there is a public need for the rezoning request. So at this time, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to Mr. McKay's rezoning request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on, on that matter?
We have, uh, we're concerned about it, but we want to know.
They won't come up, we're gonna talk about it.
You're gonna need to come forward. If you're gonna make a public comment about this or speak on the matter, you need to come forward. I need your name and address, please.
Good morning.
Randy Harrell, 065 Old Highway 80.
William D. And William Dill, 503 Old Highway 80.
Okay. All right.
I have water lines crossing this property. I have an easement crossing. What's that gonna do to my water lines and my service?
If you, if you have a recorded easement in the land records that reflects where the water line is located, this has no effect whatsoever on your rights under that easement.
Well, what if somebody else buys the land? They damaged my water lines.
The easement applies if it's, if it's drafted properly and is recorded in the land records and is a part of the title of the property. The subsequent owner of the property is subject to the same rules that, that the person who had the easement installed originally is. It goes with the land. So your rights are unaffected by what we're here talking about today of rezoning. The easement and water lines across property is a private matter between the people that own the property. So you would need to address your questions to an attorney who can help you navigate what, if anything, you need to be concerned about.
Is it your personal water line? Is it a well system?
Personal water line. It gets up to the community water. It comes from the city of Morton. And then down in the bottom of this land, there's a natural drain. If I go in there and start filling, it's gonna flood people behind. It's not gonna affect me, but it's gonna raise water up on me. And then it's gonna flood houses behind us.
Wait, wait.
That's gonna be on...
They give you a name and everything. I'm at 459 Old Highway 80, Ryan Harrell. Unless you have one of you at times. At one of your times.
I've got three here speaking too.
Okay. All right, uh, well, I think the answer to that, your question there would be, you'd have to have something, it's gotta be a platted, something drawn up that has to do with drainage and everything, anyway, it has to be approved.
That's correct. So the process is this, the first step is to rezone property. Can't put a platted subdivision in ag zone property in Rankin County. So it's got to be rezoned in order for there to be a platted subdivision. Assuming the board agrees to let it be rezoned, so a planted subdivision can happen, at that point, the developer has to provide a plat that demonstrates what's happening, where the lot's gonna be, how do they lay out, how do you get access to them, what is the drainage issue, what's the pattern for drainage, how are they gonna control the water on the property? All of that has to be addressed later. So we're here to talk about rezoning and whether or not there's a change in the character of the neighborhood to justify rezoning and a public need for residential lots out in that area.
Well, hypothetically, if we were to approve it, you know, our engineers make sure there wasn't any additional water leaving the site than what's currently doing.
He'd approve any type of draining that any engineer drew up, he'd have to approve it. He approved.
Back to the water. What's the difference with the ownership like it is? If they were to break the line and if it's a different owner, if they do, and then somebody else owns it, is there any difference?
Again, I want to be careful. If we assume...
Yeah, right.
That there is a recorded easement in the land records, that's the first assumption. It applies to the property regardless of ownership going forward. From that moment that it's recorded, going forward, that easement is of record and it's reflected in the land records. Everybody is on notice that there is a water line with an easement through there. And unless the folks that are benefited by the easement agree to change that circumstance, it's what it is. And it has to be dealt with and around and maneuvered around so that it doesn't impact that.
More likely, I mean, the water association out there is probably gonna have to upgrade that line if there is something ever developed out there. So it's gonna probably benefit putting a new system.
Rezoning.
What's that gonna do to our taxes?
Doesn't, absolutely nothing to taxes. Until the use of the property changes, until the use of the property changes, nothing changes at the taxes.
Until the use of your property.
Your property.
Not of here.
Yeah, but he approved.
Well, it probably will, in all honesty, because your property values are probably gonna go up. So you will have to pay more taxes because of that, but other than that, that's the only reason.
Already paid a lot of taxes.
I hear you, I hear you, we all are. We get that a lot.
Okay, I live right on the corner of Highway 80 and Old County, Old Highway 80 and, uh, Morton Rankin County.
You're on the Scott County side.
I can walk across the road and be in Scott County, and I'm on, in Rankin County.
Okay.
I've got a fence behind my house. I've got three-quarters of an acre that's been put there, was there when I bought the house. And that's, I'm, I'm not sure where the boundary is, though I'm, I'm gonna have to move all of that or clean all of that.
The board doesn't get into private property matters. If it's outside the road right of way, that'll be a matter between yourself and whoever the owner of the property is. If the fences are out of place, because they're over a delineated property line, that could be an issue that has to be addressed, yes, sir. But that's not something this board gets in the middle of.
But again, that doesn't matter. The current owner could say move your fence.
Right, it has nothing to do with us zoning, yeah.
Yeah, the zoning has nothing at all to do with that.
If the current owner came up and said, hey, man, you know, your fence is over, that'd be, that could happen any day.
You expect it. Sir? Do you expect that they're zoning other property?
I'm, I'm, I mean, I don't know. It's been, like I said, I bought it as was, and so.
No, sir.
We had to get it surveyed.
Yeah, I had it surveyed. I don't know. It's been 30 years. And far as flooding, you said the flooding part will be addressed at that period in time, 'cause I know back toward Pele Hachi area, the water has flooded up within a quarter of a mile.
Anytime someone does a subdivision, we, uh, we require them to do engineering study and do detention ponds if needed, so that in rain events, there's no more water leaving the site than it was originally. So just, our concerns are really after the property has been bought and, yeah, gonna be developed, right? Like y'all don't do anything with what...
Oh, we're doing it.
And you'll have time to come back.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be a, uh, if they platted and all, it'll be a, be involved is what's going on there and hearing approval of it.
I think that the owners, Mr. McKay, have already processed a lot of this through their minds, and that's why they come to us with very large lots, like five times the size of yours, to take care of their drainage issues and things like that, to where it's not, I mean, he could've come in here and said, I wanna put a house for every acre and a half, you know? And our zoning wouldn't have been any, we'd still be zoning, rezoning, just like we are. But that's not what we want, and that's not what you want. So, and, and this is a good process, to where you can come in here and ask questions and feel like you've gotten some answers when you leave.
Well, it's good you brought up the, the issue about the water. That way, we can address it, for sure.
We already have, I mean, we already had discussed that they would have to have a water study.
I got you.
So...
Anything else? Appreciate y'all. Thank you. I don't know if there's anybody else. Guess that's all, Chris.
Is there anyone else to speak on the John McKay rezoning request? Anyone else to speak on that matter? All right. Ms. President, this time we'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
Make a motion, sir.
Okay.
Approve it, whatever we're doing.
Approve, yes, sir.
House second.
Motion approved by Steve, second by Brad. Any discussion more? All in favor, aye. All opposed?
Gentlemen, the next item under my section will be a public hearing on the Freedom, Freedom's Image LLC. This is a rezoning request on Stump Ridge Road, District 4. I've got handouts. Wayne, Renee helped us with. So you can get more, you can...
I'd do much better with pictures.
I think we have got folks from the public here to, to speak on this matter. Ms. Janice is trying to wrangle them now, so if y'all will hang on just a second, we will try to get everybody to get...
Okay, so what road is this?
Stump Ridge.
Which one is...
Jay, if you'll look.
That's a power line. What's this road?
You see the green, uh, paint?
Oh, it's not, it's not.
This is what they're gonna be doing right here.
That is, it's, 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 yeah. Oh, that's stolen, okay. That's stolen.
All right.
Yeah.
North, south. Stump Ridge Road runs right through the middle of the green, of the, uh, kind of the lime green shade there.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
What you notice is the blue.
Yeah.
That's already developed. The lighter shade of peach, peachish, kinda orangey. That's developed. See, Matt, tell me.
And all of that's already been, that was already...
That's already rezoned. It's already been developed.
The blooming of peach.
You got lots already on the line, right? So the blue and the peachy color here.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, there may be one or two other places, house sites in there that have been developed on that are, are not, were not built by this particular developer, but have, have been previously developed. So there's a good bit of residential development activity that's already taking place. I pointed those out. Some of the other areas around this pink color up here has already been rezoned previously and is being considered for additional development. So that's not on the table today for you, but it's depicted on here to show you the, the amount of residential subdivision development activity that is either in place or is coming online without the board having to take any zoning action about it. So today's consideration is, uh, for the purpose of this rezoning, is what is on the east side of Stump Ridge colored lime green, all the way out to where that creek is shown on that far eastern boundary. Everybody with me? Everything that's on the west side of Stump Ridge, this lime green, does not need to be rezoned. It's already zoned correctly. That's a part of the deal that Mr. Bass will talk to y'all about later in this public, in this here, in the board meeting, okay? So that's what we're here talking about today. So now that we're kinda oriented on what we're talking about, let me go ahead and start the, the public hearing on the rezoning request. Freedom's Image LLC is seeking to rezone 241.63 acres on Stump Ridge Road that is currently zoned A1 to RE1. They plan to develop the property for residential home sites. The developer provided a preliminary plat for Liberty Landing Phase 2. That's a 39.23 acre development that contains 12 lots. 10 of those lots are three acres or larger. Renee, that's the west side of Stump Ridge, is that correct? Liberty Landing Phase 2?
That's part of the two.
That's, that's point, that's part of it, I'm sorry. That's correct. So that's the east side of Stump Ridge. If you look at your map, you'll see a power line that's depicted, runs adjacent to, it runs parallel to Stump Ridge. So those lots that are between Stump Ridge and the power line is what I just read about. That's the 39.23 acres that contains 12 lots. 10 of those lots are three acres or larger. The other two lots contain two acres. All of the lots have frontage on Stump Ridge Road. Covenant for the subdivision lists the minimum heated and cooled area as 2,400 square feet. The remaining 202.4 acres is for future residential development. And what's depicted there, without counting them, is somewhere between, say, 60 and 70 additional lots on the 202 acres. The property was posted. Notice of the hearing was published in the newspaper. Surrounding property owners within the 160 feet buffer were notified by certified mail. We didn't, we actually didn't get any phone calls at the office on, on this, on this matter. So we will open that public hearing. I want to state for the record again, when we consider a rezoning request, we are looking for three, primarily for three justifications for a rezoning request. One is a mistake in the original zoning. That is not on the table today. No one has alleged, no one is making a declaration that there was an error in the original zoning classification of A1 for this property. The other two focuses for justification are the character of the neighborhood has changed to such an extent that it justifies reclassification. And then the third is there is a public need for the rezoning. So the information that is before the board at this time would be, what is, what is the information that we have? What do we know from our own personal observations that would indicate a change in the character of the neighborhood to such an extent that it justifies? And then whether or not there is a public need for the rezoning. So there's a couple of things that come to mind when we consider that as it relates to this particular area. One is that the character of the neighborhood has changed to such a degree. What we find in this area is that there is significant residential subdivision development pressure that is already in place and has been in place for quite some time. The development of this area has taken on a particular pattern. It's generally been larger lots, lots that are in the two, three, five, seven acre category and, and larger, we have seen. And so most of the development activity out in that general area has been larger lot development. The, the reasons for that are many and varied. Folks appear, the market appears to be looking for larger lot development in a rural setting. A lot of the development activity in this area appears to be driven by the quality of the school system that serves this area. And so there is, according to what we are being told by the real estate professionals and others in this area, there is significant pressure to find residential property. And so the character of the neighborhood has changed consistently over time so that it is moving from an agricultural-based use to a residential-based use. Utilities have followed. You've got water associations that have brought online additional water infrastructure and activity in that area. A lot of that being borne by the developers themselves to have that placed. A lot of that being borne by the developers themselves to have that placed. There are other utilities that are following SUE, power, broadband, the garden variety utilities that we normally see that follows residential development activity. So, so the, it appears that based on what we know just from our own personal experience and our observations and what we've approved previously, that there is a change in the character of the neighborhood to justify the rezoning. The second consideration, is there a need for additional residential development? And that kind of is, is born or demonstrated through the market pressure, through the values of the property in this area that have gone up exponentially. And we've seen that, we know that. The cost to buy property in this area has gone up dramatically, not, not just in recent days, but over time, over the last 10 years, we've seen a steady influence of residential development, market pressure pushing the values of the property up in an upward trend. And we don't know when that will stop, but at this point, it hasn't slowed down at all. There's been significant additional development pressure to do that. And so at this time, I would invite, I would invite the developer, anyone who wants to speak on behalf of the developer, to come forward and to say anything else about the change in the character of the neighborhood and/or the need for this kind of property in this area, so.
Craig, can I?
Yes.
Not for or against. And not behind the developer's back. He knew. I met with the banker, because I want to know that we've got reliable finance. And I don't want to get halfway into this and their wheels run off, or, you know, are they confident? And they are. They've really supported the need based on phone calls, people coming to their banks and wanting to move to Pisgah. This is very similar to what Mr. McKay, just, I mean, this is a larger scale, but as far as, but we do, I mean, as far as our rezoning, things like that. Am I right, Renee? This is rezoning A to R and pretty much? All right, that's all.
I basically say the same thing. I feel a need that we're doing the right thing out there. We need, we've got a need for the residents that are moving to that area or that school. There's nothing but positive coming from that. We put the infrastructure in. All that's been supported well by all the people involved, Power Association, Water Association, Gas Company, fiber internet, all that's growing into this development.
Did you say fiber?
Yes, sir. They're done with copper cables, so anything new, and they can see the rooftops to support the return, they'll do it.
Well, it's nice to have fiber out that far, I didn't know we had it.
Come on out, we'll, we'll get you hooked up.
Well, maybe you can, maybe you can hook Steve, sell you a loan, he's on dial.
It's headed that way.
I have to go out 25 to look at my email.
Um, you know, we, this has been, you know, a good, long, thorough process. The former owners of this land, which is the timber company, do not wish to grow and harvest timber out there anymore.
And it's cut over now.
It's cut over now. That's two separate companies telling me the same thing. They're not interested. So therefore, we, we would like to see it go, you know, ag to residential for the need. And we don't, you know, we don't want to do anything to harm any others in the greater surrounding area. I think we're enhancing it, so that's our objective.
Mr. Brooks, could you come here and look at this map real quick? I got a question. On this, uh, this is Stole Road, right?
Yes, sir.
This right here, is this?
Renee.
That you're going, okay.
Now, he's got roads.
All right, so that's going to be, okay, all right. None of that's currently existing.
This is today and this is today.
Right, okay.
Existing road.
Gotcha, all right, thank you.
What, what they were talking about, if there's going to, if this is developed out the way it's planned, there's going to be a new road built that goes in and services most of these lots.
Off the school.
Off of Stump Ridge and Stole. Yep, those, uh, I know, because I was there, they have met with the engineering service that represents the county. They realize and will have to put all the money, this will be their cost to build asphalt roads and set it up, which is a tremendous expense now. But let's, between him and his banker, I guess. But anyhow, that, those roads do not exist right now, but before a house can be built or somebody move in, the road will have to be brought up to county standards with blacktop.
Thank you.
Go blacktop in the district.
Michael, what, tell me your address.
216 Donald Lane.
All right, so the prior speaker was Michael Brooks at 216 Donald Lane. Is that Brandon? 047, okay. Steve, just, I want to clarify one thing. Stump Ridge Road, which is the primary access for all of the lots that are adjacent, is an existing county public road. I didn't want anyone to, to be under the impression that the county is requiring the developer to substantially upgrade Stump Ridge Road, an existing public road, although the county has put in place protections that will allow Stump Ridge Road to be upgraded at an appropriate time after the development activity has reached a point that it's appropriate. So this is a little bit of an unusual situation in that the county has existing public roads that are tied to the development activity, and we have to account for or accommodate the fact that most of what's happening to that road relates to the development activity and not just general public travel. So we have a, we have mechanisms that are in place that don't relate to the rezoning that will allow for the protection of the existing public roads. When you mentioned that the roads will have to be brought up to county standards at the developer's expense, those are the roads that are a part of the development activity that is not currently an existing public road. I wanted to be real clear about that. So that Mr. Brooks is going to have to be responsible for everything that is off of a current public road right-of-way and goes on to a road that doesn't exist yet. In other words, roads that he's going to have to construct, or somebody's going to have to construct, to serve as the access for these interior lots that will be developed. And that's going to be on him to deal with those issues, and that will be in accordance with our standard development ordinance model that we use with every developer in Rankin County. So this, this has a little bit of weird stuff going on that's not in a typical development, and I wanted to clarify that for the record.
I got, uh, one other thing, because a lot of these people, I'm sure, live somewhere near this development. Stump Ridge Road was really a log-in road until 10, 15 years ago, or 10 years ago. And at times, you couldn't get through there in a vehicle. It'd be underwater, things like that. We have allowed this development to start and come north with the knowledge and agreement that this developer, Mr. Brooks, would bear some half of the cost to upgrade our road. And he is still, we still, if he wants to do this, he's going to have to build the roadbed up to Stole Road, and then he's going to have to put up a check to pay whatever we think is half or fair to asphalt it. And at that time, when we get that completed, hopefully, we have bond money set up on Stole Road that connects to this road and goes to 25, to where you'll have two or three different ways to come in and go out. Anyway, it won't be a traffic jam on one road.
Yes.
That, that's something that is important to some of these people that are here. What's this going to do with the traffic in front of my house? Well, it's just going to add two more outlets, is what our.
Paived.
Yes, yes. And, and the taxpayers are getting a break. We've owned the road for 100 years and never upgraded it, but this guy comes in and we say, well, you're going to have to upgrade, it's going to cost you. And he's went along with it so far.
Yes. So, and it is a good point now, since you raised that, Steve, to address a few things that we've been hearing recently, especially the speed of travel of development vehicles, dump trucks and others, and that type of thing. We get that a lot. The dust in the area, that type of thing, we get that a lot. So what we find, as we're having to address some of those issues, the natural outworking of additional traffic patterns in areas that have historically been agriculture in nature, is that sometimes it's hard to time those kinds of things, right? It would not have made any sense at a point in time, five, even five years ago, for the county to spend a significant amount of money paving some of these roads that are gravel roads and have been, where the traffic just simply, or the development activity just didn't justify it. And so some of these things are timing issues. And what we anticipate is that eventually, the development activity will reach a point where it justifies for all taxpayers of Rankin County to go on and commit the investment that's required to bring these existing gravel pub, public roads up to a point where they've got paved, paved surface on them. And, you know, the reality of that ironically is, that doesn't help you a bit on speed.
Right.
But it will help on the dust.
This area was also racing, mud riding on weekends. I'm sure some of these people that's lived out there their whole life, I know they, they're tired of it. Hopefully, this will help.
Yeah, I apologize, I did that in high school.
Right.
Which has only been a couple of years, by the way.
And so this is, this is a really good place, I think, to, and it may be a little bit of field, far afield of what we're trying to do here on, on rezoning, but it's as good a place as any to initiate this part of the conversation so people understand. Rankin County, the unincorporated county, has access to what everybody says constantly, and we all agree, we've got the best sheriff in the state. And he runs a strong department that stays on top of things. But, but he has to follow state law. And state law says, if you're a sheriff in, in Mississippi, and you don't have Columbus or Lowns County on the side of your car, you cannot run radar. We will not give you a radar unit. You cannot legally run radar in unincorporated county, anywhere in this state except Lowns Now, if somebody can tell us how my sheriff is supposed to take care of speeders in unincorporated Rankin County without access to what everybody understands to be the very best tool to deal with that, I'm all ears. Tell me how to do it. And until we get the state law changed and my sheriff can have access to radar, we will never be able to solve this problem of speed.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Stay on your legislative.
Everywhere. They're all over the county, whatever your, your problem is, probably we get it everywhere.
We introduce legislation every year, the sheriff's forced it, and we can't get it out of the legislature. Not from Rankin County delegation, but from delegations outside of us.
Cannot get it out of a committee. It dies a, a violent death.
Right.
On day two of the session, every time. And so that is, that is a constant complaint that we deal with, that we cannot address because the state legislature will not allow us to address it. I can't say that enough times or more clear than that, and it doesn't matter if I can say this as delicately as I can, I know how to. It doesn't matter how many times we are asked why we don't do something about the speed, the answer is always the same. Call your state legislature and complain. We're doing everything we can to get that fixed, but we can't do it by ourselves. And we can't issue an edict that says, we're going to run radar, state legislature, even though you say we can't. So, having said that, I will now, yes, sir?
And I promise you, I'm going to stop. One thing on the opposite end of the spectrum, I've also had calls from people that live in that area or own land in that area that have a different concern, and that is that they are in agriculture. Most or all the land that really joins this is cut over timber, for the most part. That doesn't mean that someone who has 100, 200, 300 acres may say, hey, I'm ready to run cattle or row crop it. There may be crop dusters flying at nine o'clock on Saturday morning. And I have had people call and raise cane, because they like to sleep late on Saturday morning, and there's a plane out there 100 foot higher than the house. They, they don't realize, like, they're not 100, they're 500 foot over. But anyhow, there's going to be agriculture activity around this. It may be something you smell, chicken litter, or it may be something you hear, or there may be a combine coming down the road. That happens a lot. Those people were here first. They're, we're asking them, let us come live with you, not the other way around. So, Mr. Brooks, every one of these, whoever you sell a lot to, or you need to be clear that they know there's agriculture around you, and it will probably always, that someplace that this is, for at least the rest of their lives, are going, there's going to be agriculture influence there.
All right.
Good point. So at this time, we would open the floor. We will take comments from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the Freedom's Image LLC rezoning request. When you come to speak before the board, please state your name and address for the record. Please remove your mask so the board can understand what you're saying.
And I might add one thing, if, if, because quite a few of you, if y'all are going to say basically the same thing, just don't, what I'm getting, if one has covered what you, you wanted to say, just kind of leave it there.
Do they need a map showing one?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I'm Joseph Taylor, 1312 Abbey Drive off of Holly Bush, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Mount Hill Missionary Baptist Church. I'd like to introduce my pastor, Pastor James Grazer, he would just raise his hand, and members of the Missionary Baptist Church that's here with us this morning. And first of all, I'd like to say, we're not against the rezoning, we just want to make sure that we are on the front end rather than the tail end, is what we can do at the church. The church has been there for over 175 years, and it's good to see some lights back there beside the church light.
Might get some new members.
Exactly. We are open for new members. And what I were concerned here this morning, that we have about six and a half acres of property there at the church. We do have a cemetery at the church. We have two acres that we purchased in the last three, four, five years for a family life center. And we just want to make sure that we are able to pull the proper permits in addition for the church on our property at the said time that we want to. Also, we have an old cemetery that's about a mile, and the address for the church is 833 Mount Hill Road, but it's about a mile south down in the woods when they had a brush harbor back in old days. And it's a cemetery there, and we would like to have access to that cemetery to keep that property up if we could. I don't know if it's a right-of-way there now.
I don't know if it's, uh, uh, right away there now or not, but we always was able to go in and do whatever we had to do in three, four, five years. So we just, uh, you know, the membership of the church, the offices, they change over time. The pastors would change. And we would like for this to be put in, uh, writing of some kind of acknowledgement to where other people is coming in that they would know and not, not be hearsay. So that's pretty much our main concern this morning while we're here.
Okay.
Uh, there's, there's the place where you said you traveled about a mile south of where your church is for the other cemetery?
Yes.
It's an old cemetery?
That's an opposite direction of this, isn't it?
Yes, it's in opposite directions.
Has nothing to do with this property?
Have nothing to do with the property that I'm talking about building the family life center on. And we do welcome our, our neighbors to come by and visit with us at the church.
Craig?
As far as permits, is there any, anything that would create a problem there? I don't think it would be.
You'll allow me, uh, this way I can address it in the, on, on. Yep, so it sounds like there's two things. Uh, uh, unless I missed something, neither of them relate directly to the rezoning requests this before the board. So the board has the discretion to take up the, the requests that were posed by this gentleman on behalf of the church, if it wishes to. Otherwise, it could just suspend and take it up after we get finished, but whatever, doesn't matter.
Maybe he, uh, I was reading into this permit deal. Was anything that's gonna be happening here, would that be a problem later for them? If they wanted to build a family life, is there gonna be some objection to a permit? They would kinda like the farming deal.
Yeah, so, uh, the way, the way our zoning is set up, and this'll be, this'll be something that will be good news or will sound good to any, any church or faith community in Rankin County. Under our zoning, we allow a church and related church structures in any zone in Rankin County with a conditional use. Every single church is treated exactly the same. So if all the property around Mount Hill Church changed to something like industrial and just left y'all sitting there, you would still be able to have a church right there under our zoning. And do the addition. You can make a permit for the addition, as long as it, as long as it fits within the context of what the church is doing, and it's a part of the church's ministry, it'll be treated just like the church.
What about the cemetery? We have an acre, one acre east of the church across the street there where the power line is, and we do have a cemetery. But if it came to time, then we had to use that for cemetery, that I did that also.
Yep, so generally speaking, uh, cemeteries are, it's kind of an unusual situation. I, do you know, and this may be a conversation that I need to have with Mr. Taylor at some point, just me and him talking about it and trying to figure it out, 'cause I, I don't know if it's really subject for public hearing. But generally speaking, a cemetery is defined, there would be a boundary defining it, and there would be a typically, there's either an association that is created or a part, it's done as a part of the church. The church actually has a cemetery committee. Okay? And so typically, that's who's in charge of operating that. If that's a defined legal boundary and it's reflected on the tax maps as a cemetery, nothing we're here talking about rezoning changes that. And so, I, it, it's, you know, keeping it up is important. Uh, the, the grave markers actually being visible and kept, you know, reasonably.
They are.
Upkept.
Anybody who has a basic.
Yes. Uh, fencing it, keeping a fence around it is important. With all of those facts on the ground that everybody can see, I'm not troubled that something could happen here that somebody just come run roughshod over that. All right? So it's too much, too much evidence that it's there. Uh, so I, I don't think there's an issue. There's nothing about this rezoning, there's nothing about the, the changing into residential that will negatively impact the church because they can be in residential. They can add a facility in residential. It's just done through a conditional use process.
By the church being a, like I say, a changing of hands through time, is it possible that we can get something on paper where the future generations will have?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, e- even if the board were of a mind to do that, which we don't typically do, it would only be good for as long as all five of them are sitting up there as supervisors. And we have these things called elections.
I understand.
And they tend to change things from time to time.
They could come to that soup, that sort of soup.
You got it.
We just want to make sure that we are friendly neighbors and everything, you know?
What, what I think would be appropriate, and, and I'm willing to do with this board's authorization, would be to, to write a letter to Mr. Taylor on behalf of the church and, and just simply indicate the church's plan for an addition, family life center addition, uh, will be entertained irrespective of the zoning classification. And it would just simply have to meet our standard requirements for conditional use applications. And any, any cemetery that the church is currently utilizing, uh, it would be good for us to go ahead and make sure that it's on our tax maps, it's being shown as a cemetery. Uh, it, I don't have a problem writing that letter on behalf of the board and communicating that. I think that would, that would be good for the church to have and good for us to have as well. Just clarity on that.
What about access to the old cemetery?
All right, typically, let me tell you what the board's, uh, how, how, how the board supervisors relates to church cemeteries. There's a quirky little state law. It's in our Title forty-one, uh, Title nineteen, nineteen three forty-one, I think, five. We can look it up and make sure we're clear on this. The board has the authority to go to extend one hundred and fifty feet from a public right of way to, to provide access to a church cemetery. Hundred and fifty feet. So we take a tape measure from the edge of the right of way line on whatever the public road is, and we go a hundred and fifty feet in the direction of cemetery, and that's what the county can help with. Beyond the one fifty, we can't touch. It's the church, the property owner, whatever else. And, and we don't provide access.
But we don't want highway, we just want a way we can just go in and.
Yes.
And maintain, you know, access.
It would be important to determine where's the cemetery in relation to public road? Who owns the property between the cemetery and the public road? We would need that information. And then we can start dealing with what's our, what's our distance from the right of way across property to get to the access for the cemetery. We can help with a hundred and fifty feet of that. When I say we help, I'm not a road manager.
We can do that.
Okay.
Craig, that's specific to a cemetery.
A church cemetery.
Yeah, church cemetery.
Not a private cemetery.
Okay, I was fixing to say, so I were to, uh, w- one of my cousins were to die, and I said, well, let's bury him right here, and then I can get my driveway built.
Yes, sir.
Don't, that won't work.
No, sure, that won't work, Steve. Not unless we got a First Baptist Church of Steve out there that has an, a First Baptist Church Steve cemetery.
All right. Mr. Taylor, you look familiar. Are you, you work with Evergreen?
No, I'm in, I'm in Fanning over there.
Fanning, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, about in March, I believe, to get a rezonation property that we own.
Thank you.
So, that's, uh, that's pretty much, I, one thing I would like to say about it, speeding situation coming down Holly Bush. Uh, I don't think you have to have a radar to tell that some of us are speeding. And I find myself sometime getting over to forty-five mile an hour, but we do have some speeders.
You're being recorded.
We do have some speeders that come through there that are well over, uh, that. And you can look down the street on one side, and by the time you pull out, they're right in your tailgate.
But there's no way for us to prove that.
Yeah.
Because we're no radar. I'm sure, we all agree with you.
I understand the radar.
I agree with you. They, I can tell you they're going way too fast.
Right. Well, I, I witnessed an accident right down Abbey Drive in Holly Bush about a month ago. And I tried to call, uh, Mr. Bailey a couple of times to tell him, uh, how well his office has handled the situation. Uh, but it's, it's hard for people coming out of side streets on Holly Bush uh, to get in the highway without getting hit. So it's a, a matter of life and death. It's something that we definitely need to see about getting a law, uh, done, whatever we need to do about it. But I appreciate you.
You know who to call. You know who to call then? Call the legislature.
We got it.
Call them.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll give you my address.
Can you make sure one of them has the address? And they'll make sure I have it? That way you don't have to hang around?
Craig, there's one person called me that was gonna be out of town and asked me to please protect his interest. He owns a hundred and sixty acres that comes out two stump reeds in the middle of this development.
Yes, sir.
They farm, but they also have a good bit of dirt back here that they've been waiting. They don't have to cash in right now, and they're gold. At some point, these dirt pits all around are gonna be out of dirt. And that's whenever they wanna strike. This was a gravel road. This was what, the way that Mike routed these trucks in and out. Uh, this is now gonna be blacktop, probably from there to twenty-five, and just about any direction. I mean, at some point, by the time that they're ready to dig, I want to make sure that we understand that we're coming in there on him. We've got to allow access for him to get maybe out to twenty-five or to Holly Bush or whichever direction.
Yes, sir.
That, uh, I just want to go on record that, I don't want to handcuff the people out here by changing a zoning that they don't even really want changed.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so the, uh, the, the mining operation that would accompany that, Steve, is controlled primarily by Department Environmental Quality that has a mining permit process. That would probably be one of the first steps that the individual would have to take.
Well, their, their thought now is not that. Uh, they'll follow those rules and guidelines, being able to get on the road now that they're asphalt roads.
Understood, understood. Yep, so the county will have the ability at an appropriate time, whenever that starts or gets ready to start, to address the issue of protecting the public road as it exists at the time. It would be appropriate for the county to keep in mind that this was raised at a point in time before the road had been upgraded.
Yes.
Okay? And so I think, I think the board at the time can accommodate whatever circumstances may exist at that time.
It's, it's not gonna be one on every corner. Because if you look at this, there's only one piece that actually makes it out to the public road. So I don't anticipate this being, just catching on fire, and everybody has a dirt pit running out there on the, on the asphalt.
Okay. So, uh, we, we still have, um, the public hearing open on Freedoms Image LLC. I'll ask if there's anyone else, Mr. Taylor has spoken. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition of Freedoms Image LLC? Name and address, please.
My name is Cole Gilbro. I live two oh seven Fleming Road. I'm not really opposed to the rezoning. Uh, however, I'm making my living in agriculture, and I know a lot of y'all gentlemen have agriculture. Uh, I was just wondering if there was some way we can maybe put into the covenances if these people are aware. I know Mr. Brooks said he would tell them, but if you're getting somebody from Jackson and you tell them there may be chicken litter or a crop duster, they may not really comprehend what that is until they see or smell it. And then they start calling like, what is this stuff these people, I got flies, you know? Like, they, they wanna be in the country, but they don't really maybe understand what that entails. Maybe if that's something we could put in covenances that they have to sign, that they are aware.
They understand.
They have to go to a chicken house and smell, I mean, you know, that they're really aware of what it is because even though somebody's telling them that, they may not comprehend what it is.
Take a little sample bag, this is it.
Yeah, yeah, this, that they are aware of, of everything that the,
That they're getting.
Agriculture, you know, could bring to the table. And, you know, maybe a tree fall on a fence, and they wake up morning, one morning, there's fifty head of cows in their backyard, and they're not headed to their lawyer's office for me to have to pay for, to put the sod in their backyard. You know, that, that stuff happens and, uh, I, I don't know if that's something that, that, that Mr. Brooks can maybe put into his covenances.
I don't, Greg.
Or.
It would really be, um, a, a process of interaction between Mr. Gilbro uh, and others, neighbors, who are also in the, in the, in the farming business, uh, to work with Mr. Brooks and his development company to have some sort of notification ins- inserted in the covenant.
I think you understand what he's trying to say. Makes people aware that, that aren't aware of what this is. This is farm life. You know? And you're, you're moving into that.
The whole process of that, half of them don't even know how to build a house.
I know.
Build their first house. There's a lot of walking through things with all of these residents. So that can be another.
If it was. I, I see his point, though, 'cause if I move out there and I start seeing a cow in my backyard or something, then, or, 'cause I'm just a straight city guy, right?
If you see a cow, and it's black, call me. Don't, don't call the sheriff.
So let me, let me give a little bit of a context to the question, okay?
Good.
Um, and Mr. Gilbro has not asked for the board to, to do anything itself uh, because they've really not any authority for this board to, to mandate that people accept things and give up their right to complain. We, we've tried that, and it doesn't work, okay? Uh, so that's beyond the purview of what the board can, can do. However, it seems like a reasonable request to me to just simply put some notification in the covenants. That's the best place to put them, by the way, because that applies to all of the lots that are a part of the development that covered, that's covered by covenants. And it would just simply be language that says, welcome to the country. There're gonna be some things that happen in and around your property that are part of agriculture.
Yeah.
It, it's going to happen in your own notice that it's gonna happen.
But if you had, if the fence, if the tree falls on the fence in the cow's yard, that's gonna be hard to separate that one.
But, 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 but the point he's making exactly, on Fanning Land Circle, on the north shore of the reservoir, there's been several subdivision from Cottonwood to Bonneville and all those areas right there that back up to an existing barn that's been there, where the people's had horses and, and cattle and stuff like that. And I've gotten numerous calls that the guy sits on his back patio in his platted subdivision and smells horse manure from across the road in the hot summertime, right wind direction travels, and he's irate about it. And, Mr. Nannett, we've had calls on that, and, and there's, there's nothing we can do. It's zoned agriculture, it's been there forever. That barn had been there, but well before my time, right? It's been there a long time. And, um, so those complaints come from people that move to what they feel like's a platted subdivision inside a thick, an, an area. So th- those are issues that come up. But I, I think the, the right point is just to make them aware of it, that in there's covenants that, hey, you are in an agricultural atmosphere, and you could smell it. 'Cause, I mean, I get those calls on Fanning Land Circle at the reservoir right now, just exactly what you're saying. Nobody's cows are in their yard yet, but there's a creek, a lake between them. So they're, have trouble there. But the smells are there, and to somebody like me, that's a, you know, I'm going to grab a hold of my son, you know?
Bigger lives.
Yeah.
You know, welcome to horses, things like that. So I think they're still a little bit different than the physical.
Yeah.
Yeah. They may have their own horse.
But I, but I think if you just make them aware of it, that, hey, it, it could be a possibility that you, that you run into these type of chickens in your yard or something, but.
Yeah, so, you know, at the end of the day, it really needs to be a process of cooperation between the representatives of the agricultural community and the representatives of the developer saying, this is a way that we think we can get the notice out and make it more difficult for folks to come out there and say they didn't know. That's the key.
'Cause they, they'll call us.
There's, there's no question about it. Well, they'll call Gaines, 'cause I'll give them Gaines' number.
All right.
All right.
Excellent point. I'm glad Mr. Gilbro was here to voice that. Okay. Is there anyone else to speak on the matter of the Freedoms Image LLC? Stump Ridge Road, morning, are you? The representative of the lending institution is Preszai. We've already covered the need issue. Your, uh, Ms., Ms. President, if, uh, remind me, I'm.
Ms. Nowell, that's right.
If y'all wanna hear from Ms. Nowell about the, the demonstration of the need, if y'all are satisfied that the need has been demonstrated.
I don't, I don't. I'm good. I think everybody understands now.
On this matter, we will close the public hearing.
Ms. President, we will close that public hearing. Uh, at this time, uh, I believe it would be appropriate to take action on the Freedoms Image LLC rezoning request.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Brad, seconded by Steve.
Jay.
Jay, any discussion? Jay, any discussion? I oppose. Okay.
There's, there's a, a lot of discussion that we could have for days, but remember, this is just changing the zoning.
That's correct.
We, we'll have a lot of other conversations as to the square footage, which he had lim, made reference. I think these are actually going to be.
2,400.
2,800, I believe, on the south, on the, 2,600, 2,600. Uh, that's, okay, it's, yeah, we want to try to keep, some people have concerns that their property values. Well, we're not going to let something like that happen if we can control it at all. So we're going up on square footage. As, anyhow, I think we'll have other discussions in the future as far as some of this layout and stuff. So this isn't your last chance to get a whack at us, at me.
All right.
We have a motion in a second, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Very good. The next item on the agenda, and that completes the Freedom's Image matter.
Thank y'all for coming.
If anybody is, wants to leave, they're welcome to. Do the whack stuff. That's coming up. Gentlemen, if you'll give us just a moment, we, we have, on the next matter, that is a conditional use application. We have folks that are here for that matter and we need to get them in here.
Okay. Well, it only took about 45 minutes.
That's true. That's true.
They had one spokesperson that was good. They did handle it real well.
It wasn't really anything to do with.
No, no.
I'm following your lead, okay?
Morning.
Morning. Gentlemen, the next item for consideration under my section of the agenda is a public hearing for the Cool Deep Singh Conditional Use Permit at 1123 Old Fannin Road, Suite B, District 2. I'm going to use Renee's cheat sheets to, to introduce this matter for consideration. We have, we have individuals in front of here to speak on that matter. Cool Deep Singh is seeking a conditional use permit to open a liquor store in the Exxon Convenience Store at 1123 Old Fannin Road, Suite B. The rental space contains approximately 1,750 square feet. The parcel is .96 acres. The property is located in the qualified resort area delineated by the state legislature in Rankin County. Liquor stores are listed as a conditional use in C2 zone. Now, that's, this property is zoned C2, if I didn't say that. Liquor stores cannot be, under our zoning context and under ABC regulations as well, the liquor stores cannot be located within 500 feet of the property lines of any existing residential use or any residentially zoned property, church, school, hospital, convalescent or nursing home, cemetery, civic organization, civic organization building or facility, public or private park or playground, or any property that is zoned S1 special use district. Property was posted and notice of the public hearing was published in the newspaper as required by the ordinance. We received one call about the application. At this time, we will open that public hearing and I will ask either Mr. Singh or his representative to step forward and to address the board with respect to the application for conditional use and the justifications for the request.
Thank you and good morning. Wanted to thank the board for consideration of this conditional use permit. My name's John Martin. I'm an attorney in Canton, representing Mr. Singh. I know we've been here before, but last time was just at the planning board function, so. Mr. Singh is a resident of Rankin County. He has filed the application with the board to operate a packaged convenience liquor store under the relatively new legislation that I'm sure you're very much familiar with for resort status. As counsel correctly pointed out, it, it does meet the, the basic legal requirements, which are that it has to be in a qualified resort area. It has to be zoned commercial, which it is C2, and it can't be located within 500 feet of a residence or a church or school or cemetery, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think there's any question that it does not, that it qualifies under those basic requirements. One thing I did just want to point out, if, if y'all are familiar with this location, it's at, kind of at the intersection of Old Fannin and Spillway, just to the south.
Right.
There actually are three separate suites. The Spillway Diner and then the Convenience Store, which is part of the Exxon gas station in the middle. And this proposed package store is in Suite C, which as counsel pointed out, is about 1,750 square feet on the, on the far right side. I did bring, I don't know if we have any pictures of the facility, but just kind of for your information.
You do have pictures?
Okay, okay.
Why don't we do that? Renee, do you mind exhibiting two, exhibit two up, please? There you go. Guys, that may, and John, that may not, you may want to hand your stuff out.
I think that's probably fine, just, just to make sure that we're identifying the correct property. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a good aesthetic structure. You know, it's, I think it's, it fits the area as far as the architecture. The building across the street is actually managed or owned by the same group, which is a shell station. There have been, as you know, several other package stores approved in the immediate area. I know that the board approved the Toppers location in December, I believe, of 2020. And it's, if you're looking at the picture, it's just a block basically to the right, another package store. Nice looking structure, but again, I think that this, you know, as far as the aesthetics, it has a good, good look. It's well maintained. Again, our, our intent is to, is to comply with the requirements. I think that it's, certainly it meets all of the statute and, and actually, as the board acknowledged at the beginning of this year, this, this legislation that passed is actually a mandate from the state. And I know it's not popular in every community because we have a long history with, you know, liquor laws in the state that goes back to the 1800s. And you may remember the famous soggy sweat speech in the 1950s on prohibition, and some of those concerns still remain. But there's no disputing that the legislature has passed this qualified resort statute that allows for permits to be issued for these types of uses. So we would respectfully request that the board grant the conditional use because it, again, it meets all the requirements. It's not located within any of these uses where obviously you don't want a liquor store next to a church. You don't want a liquor store next to a residence. But we think it's consistent with the market. If there are any concerns about the market or the number of stores in the area, we think the market is the best way for that to be viewed.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I mean, you're saying a lot of the same things and we're aware, we are aware of the, the way the legislature designed it and the way it, what its restrictions of where it can be. So, I mean, and, and you're kind of repeating some of the same things. So I'm just, in, in the blue that we have a lot more to do. If you've got any other new points or more.
Sure, no, I think you hit the nail on the head. I mean, it's, you know, it's fairly straightforward and we, again, we thank the board for its consideration of the permit. And unless there are any questions about it for the, I do have the operator, Mr. Singh, as well as the landlord, Nav Finn, who owns the building. Unless there are any questions, we would just respectfully request that the board grant the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, in addition to the application and, and this will be an exhibit in the record. Do you have any other documents that we need to put in the record along with the application?
I think the only other document, I mean, it's public, it's the approval of the other one that I referenced in December. I do have the minutes. I mean, it's, it's, it's already in the record of.
The Toppers approval.
Toppers approval from December.
You got a copy?
Yeah, I do.
We will go ahead and make sure that that's included.
Okay.
All right. Mr. President, if I may, we're going to, we're going to mark this exhibit 10 to the record. This will be the minutes of the board supervisors and specifically that portion of the minutes of the board supervisors meeting from December the 15th where, where this board granted the conditional use application for the Toppers location.
Good.
So that'll be exhibit 10 for the purposes of this record. Thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Cool Deep Singh Conditional Use Application for 1123 Old Fannin? Is there anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. Staff has a presentation on this matter that it would like to make with the board's indulgence. And if we may, the first exhibit to the record is the conditional use application that has been submitted on behalf of Mr. Singh, the operator, and presumptively on behalf of the property owner. Exhibit 2 is before you. This is the location of the proposed use. You'll see 1123 marked with a little red indicator there. That's a, that's a bird's eye view of the location in relation to both Old Fannin and Spillway. You can see it there. That's the Exxon gas station location. Exhibit 3, which I'll ask Renee to demonstrate, this represents the qualified resort area as defined by the Mississippi Legislature that applies to Rankin County. Let me clarify. This is not, this does not relate to Pearl River Valley's property. This is the Rankin County, unincorporated Rankin County segments or parcels of property that are delineated by state law as qualified resort area. I wanted you to get a, a good picture of, of the area that we're talking about, where a liquor, liquor store that is subject to this board's determinations could actually physically be located. That's it, right there, okay? Exhibit 4 will be a demonstration of PRV's property in the general area. And in the wisdom of the state legislature, they issued a law that says everything that is PRV is qualified resort area. PRV's property can hold or can allow, at the discretion of their board, anywhere in there that meets their restrictions, a liquor store can go. And by the way, they've helped themselves to that because they have permitted, in the last 10 months, three, three liquor store operations. The next slide will be a demonstration of where your liquor stores in the qualified resort area currently are located. I hope you can see that. You'll see, the colors aren't the greatest, but we'll do our best. You'll see kind of a darker greenish color that's depicted there. It, it demonstrates the three locations where PRV has issued permits for liquor stores. See one on the far right of the image there? Right, I'm, okay. Apparently I'm going to be operating a laser here. Do you see where I'm circling right there with the laser?
That's where the dot.
You see that right there? That is a PRV location. If I'm not mistaken, that's close to the Revel A's Hardware that's down.
That's where, that's where Hugh Ward Boulevard tees in the Spillway.
Hugh Ward and Spillway is right there.
That's correct. That's Bay Park, that's the entrance to Bay Park subdivision.
Right. So in my heart, that's still Feathered Cow where I'm circling, right, Daniel?
That's right.
That's still Feathered Cow.
Correct.
But that's now a package store permitted by PRV. And right here is number three. That is very close to Spillway McDonald's, which is what my girls still call it to this day. Because that was, at one time when they were young, that was the only McDonald's in the area that had a playground in it. So we went to the Spillway McDonald's a lot. There's the three PRVs right there. The distances between them are reflected on this map. 1,675 feet between Feathered Cow and Hugh Ward. 870 feet between Feathered Cow and Spillway McDonald's. Your Toppers location is right here, permitted in December of '20. That was what this board did in December of '20. The red dot right here, that is your proposed liquor store that you're talking about today. So we wanted to point out and demonstrate, from Toppers to proposed is 440 feet. From proposed to Spillway McDonald's is roughly 500 feet. Between, in the span of about 1,000 feet, you would be looking at three package store operations within 1,000 feet of each other. Okay? We wanted to, we wanted to point that out to the board. That's exhibit five. Exhibit six, which we are going to make a part of the record just for clarity, is your zoning ordinance. We're not going to bother you with the details of that, but it's there. Exhibit seven will be your comprehensive plan, which is also an important part of your consideration today. I'll get into that momentarily. And because of this situation being new, and I think Mr. Martin correctly indicated that when he was addressing the board, this is new. It is, it's an issue that's been visited upon this board by the state legislature through its passage of the qualified resort area law. But we did want to point one thing out about that. It is new. The board of supervi-, this, I'm reading from the state law that established the legal framework that we're operating under today. The Board of Supervisors of the county in which the qualified resort area is located may, may, by ordinance or resolution, provide that package retailer's permits may be issued in the applicable qualified resort area and that it shall be lawful to receive, store, sell, possess and distribute alcoholic beverages in accordance with such package retailer's permits. So the issue is not that it is in the qualified resort area and that it is not within so many feet of a, of a prohibited land use. The issue is whether or not this board believes, finds, opines that it should be permitted. You still have the final say as to whether or not the use is permitted. It is not a mandate. Let me restate. It is not a mandate by the state legislature. You still determine whether or not it will be permitted. And that's what we're here to talk about today. The question then becomes, how do we figure out whether or not it should be permitted? Well, we use our zoning ordinance and we use our comprehensive plan. That's the framework that this board addresses land use considerations from. So what I want to do at this point is to indicate to you what your zoning ordinance says about these things. First, your zoning ordinance actually defines what is a conditional use, a permitted conditional use. Your zoning ordinance defines it as a land use which would not generally. defines it as a land use which would not generally be appropriate in a particular zoning district, but which, with certain restrictions or conditions, would, in the judgment of the Board of Supervisors, promote the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the county, and would not adversely affect adjacent properties. That's what you are charged to determine. Would this use adversely affect adjacent parcels? And does it promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community? That's the question. There are a number of requirements that are required as a part of that demonstration. Among them are things such as parking, emergency response, lighting, effect on adjacent properties. So, the question then becomes, and by the way, one of those requirements is your assessment of the general compatibility of this proposed land use with the adjacent properties and other properties within the district. Compatibility becomes a question. Because this is such a new thing for us, and because we are starting to see a significant, I will call, I will state it as a saturation point, because we are seeing the number of these uses in this area in close proximity to one another, I reached out on behalf of the board to a gentleman by the name of Chris Watson. Mr. Watson is with the Bridge and Watson Consulting Firm out of Oxford. Mr. Watson is a foremost expert on urban and residential planning in our state. He is, he is extremely well-read in this subject area. He has a master's degree in planning. He is sought out as an expert witness in purposes that are related to annexation and zoning matters specifically. And so, he, he is the go-to fella in our state to ask the question, what do you think about this proposed use? Mr. Watson was kind enough to provide us with an extensive report of his evaluation of this proposed use. I'm not going to belabor you with that report today. I am going to simply indicate that it is Exhibit 8 to the record of this proceeding, and I will read from Mr. Watson's conclusion, which is found in the report. "The number and concentration of liquor stores in this area, in my opinion, is not compatible with the neighborhood and creates a significant risk of having a blighting influence on the neighborhood." That's his conclusion. Now, Mr. Watson does not make the decision. It is your decision to make. But Mr. Watson has given his opinion about this proposed use in relation to the other already permitted liquor stores in the area, and his evaluation of what the character of this neighborhood community is, and how this proposed use would relate to that. His finding, again, is that it's not compatible. I go back one more time to your conditional use language in your own zoning ordinance. It's very clear what it says. It says that you are to determine the general compatibility of the use proposed with adjacent properties and other property within the district. Mr. Watson says it's not compatible, in his opinion, and it's because of its location and proximity and the saturation point that we have now reached. If this board were to permit this use, you will have five package retail liquor stores within less than a quarter mile all of one another. His report is replete with references to studies that have been conducted that are specific to alcohol package retail stores and the effect on the community, especially communities in our area, in our proximity, that have historically had to deal with these kinds of locations around them. And those impacts have been well-studied and well-versed, and Mr. Watson refers to those. So, on the basis of, and by the way, my analysis, what I am referring to, what I am reading from and referring to in addressing the board, we are referring it to that as the Board Attorney's Public Hearing outline. That is Exhibit 9 to the record. Again, the record will be the conditional use application, the street view or aerial view of the property, the qualified resort area map for unincorporated Rankin County, the maps related to PRV's property in this vicinity. Exhibit 5, that is still on display here, which will be the proximity of all of the currently permitted liquor store locations, and in red, the proposed use location. Your zoning ordinance is number 6. Your comprehensive plan is number 7. Mr. Chris Watson's report to the Board Attorney and the board is number 9. I'm sorry, it's number 8. My reference outline will be number 9, and the minutes of your December 15 meeting as submitted by Mr. Martin will be number 10. That constitutes the record of this public hearing. And I asked if there were any additional documents to be submitted and made a part of the record, and I have not heard of any additional documents. That will constitute the record. So, our, the staff's recommendation is that, based on the factors that have been demonstrated and discussed by me, based on Mr. Watson's report, we do not believe that the application should be granted. So, at this time, it will be appropriate for us to entertain any decision the board wishes to make today.
Can I ask one question? I haven't seen the report. I know Chris Watson, but I certainly haven't spoken with him about this matter. I didn't know that he had prepared a report. Did the report address the application of the zoning ordinance and compatibility and use of the other liquor store that the board approved in December of 2020?
I, I'm gonna let Mr. Watson's report speak for itself. I'm not gonna try to, to opine on precisely what Mr. Watson's report covers. The, all of the documentation, by the way, that is a part of the record will be made available to counsel opposite, and all of that can be provided, and it will speak for itself.
Is there a discovery issue in administrative things like this?
No, sir.
No? Okay.
All right. No other information? All right, I make the motion. We close this public hearing, and no other information will be submitted to the record.
Yeah, second.
Okay. Motion to close this public hearing. Mr. Bishop, second. Brian Cross. Any discussion? Not all, first, aye?
Aye.
All opposed.
Okay. I make a motion to deny the conditional use, and I have a few things here to deny the proposed use because it's not compatible with the residential neighborhood properties that are in close proximity. The proposed use is not compatible with adjacent commercial businesses that support in large part by the neighborhood. The number of liquor stores already permitted in close proximity. The tight concentration of already permitted liquor stores in the area poses significant risk, blighting influences on the surrounding neighborhoods. And my motion is based on these reasons. The motion is based on all the information contained in the record of the public hearing.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
All right. Motion denied by Mr. Bishop with a list of reasons and second by...
You don't want to repeat them all?
Read it back to me, Jay.
The same reasons we've been hearing.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Not all, first, aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay.
Mr. President, if I may, I would like for the board's authorization to provide Mr. Martin or Mr. Singh, whomever, a copy of all of the documentation that has been, that has been submitted and made the record in this matter. And with your permission, we will do that without the need for a public record request and without the need to charge.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good with that.
We will make a complete copy of what is the record. I do want to clarify, Jay, I believe your, your first motion that was seconded and voted on, you indicated, make sure that I'm hearing correctly what your motion is, you established that the 10 items that I referenced constitute the record of this public hearing, and that no additional documentation will be submitted or considered as a part of the record. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Okay?
Okay.
That matter is concluded. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm the new attorney. Yeah, we'll, we'll pace the light. We got you.
All right. We got it. This next one, you've been approved.
Now that the, now that that public hearing is completely over, let me address one thing about this liquor store business. It's important for the board to understand that in denying this particular application, the board is not forestalling or cutting off any further applications that may come before the board that meet the qualifications. Saying no to one does not automatically say no to all. I want to make that clear.
Good.
The second thing that I think we probably want to address at some point is whether or not our current policy of requiring a minimum square footage is adequate for the area, especially if we are attempting to make a use like this to be compatible. Okay?
Yeah, I sure wish we had a chance to do over what we did. I've been in that one, and it is substantially undersized, so.
It would be appropriate at some point, either today or later, if the board wishes to upgrade its policy with respect to minimum square footage. We would, we would need that to be clearly indicated to us on the staff's side so we can communicate that to applicants. And so, I would be curious to know what the board thinks of minimum square footage and adequate minimum square footage should be.
Well, the one over there at, that, by Revel, whatever size that one is, I think is just right.
The, the current size of the Toppers is what? You remember off the top of your head, Renee?
1,500.
1,500, I mean, we need to be in the 2,500 range or 3,000 square foot range. Explore those possibilities of it, because the 1,500 is small.
Well, it's made since half of it's for storage, you know, so he probably doesn't have 700 retail, maybe?
Keep in mind that that's what we, I believe that's what we indicated with our, with our 1,500 feet, was that it be the retail portion of the facility for that use. They had to meet the 1,500 on that score. And so, if we want to clarify and say that the retail space needs to be 2,500, we just need to make sure we're clear about what we're saying.
Look bigger than this building room.
Yeah. So, it excludes storage.
It's about 30 by 4.
It would exclude storage. It would exclude what I'll call customer gathering areas. It needs to be the actual retail footprint of that facility, which would be where is the product being offered for sale?
It doesn't cover storage.
Correct.
Right. And evidently, that's what covers, we didn't do that.
Took in storage and retail.
Storage, got it. Yep.
So, if, if the board wishes to move in that direction, we need to start working on policy language.
I mean, I'd like to hear some, I'd like to hear some ideas on it. Something to kick around. Maybe start with that base, Jay, you think?
Yeah.
Let's hear it.
Maybe if you're gonna exclude storage, you, you would back up to like 2,000 for retail footprint. But y'all just need to talk about that. If you exclude the storage piece, then, then putting a 2,000 on your retail space is, that's a pretty big order.
1,500 is big for retail. I mean, first step, and then, but, I mean...
I mean, if this was just for retail, I'm, I'm looking at this room. If it was just retail.
Y'all talk about it, and, and y'all come up with a good idea for us?
The one that we have over there is not as big as this room.
I know. I'm saying, if this was just for retail.
But the building itself is 1,500 total, and he only using half of it for retail.
Right.
The 1,500 would be more than enough for retail, but you're gonna need another 1,000 square feet for store.
500, I think so.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Item J, into my section. I have been up here entirely too long, so I'm gonna try to move through this as quickly as I can.
Thank you.
You're authorizing the voiding of 2016 personal property tax. You see the PIN number, Lakeside Express 3465. You're also authorizing voiding and removing from the system PIN 1298, Lakeside Express. That's the 2017s at 311098. This is cleaning up our records. They've never paid anything. There is no refund. We're just cleaning up our records and making it clear.
Yeah. Jay made it. Second.
Motion by Daniel. Who was it?
Jay.
Jake?
Jay.
And second by Brad. Any more discussion? All first, aye? All opposed.
Gentlemen, y'all authorize me to go and seek reimbursement for damage to the Reservoir Park Bridge. This is not North Shore Causeway. I'm, I'm still working on that. Reservoir Park Bridge. This is a wooden bridge that is associated with the area where they play soccer up there. Northwest Athletic Association plays soccer there. A lady that ran over our bridge and knocked it slam into the creek. And so, her, her insurance company has paid us for all of the damage caused to the county, including barricades, staff time, equipment, downtime, i.e. even threw in a little bit for the sheriff's patrol having to deal with traffic issues. We got it all back. I'm intending to do the same thing for the North Shore Causeway, but y'all gonna have to let me have a little more time.
Hey, I do want to say one thing on that Reservoir Park soccer area. Mr. Bishop has paved that joint. That didn't, hadn't got any publicity. I thought Harrison would give him a attaboy up in there, but Harrison dropped the ball, so I'm doing it. So, from the people that, the soccer complex here is kind of county road around. Been needing paving. They'd come to us and talked to us before. Jay took the ball on that, and, yeah, well, it don't...
I appreciate y'all being willing to help me with it, too.
I know you messed up, I know you messed up a lot of things, but you got that one right, so.
Yeah, I didn't know anything about it.
This, this is just to acknowledge receipt of full reimbursement for all damages associated with that. If I can just get a motion to acknowledge receipt.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Jake. All first, aye? All opposed.
Item M is a little bit of a strange deal, so bear with me. Let me walk y'all through what we're doing here. Typically, we approve 16th Section leasehold interest as a matter of routine course. This is a little bit of a not unusual situation born out of a set of hard circumstances where a lady is trying to get into a residential structure on 16th Section property and has been hung up for the better part of a couple of months because of process paperwork. There's been some transition on the school's side in the 16th Section office, and so, some of that transition has intruded here in this process, and we've been trying to navigate some of that. What you're doing is you're making a contingent approval of the 16th Section lease. It's contingent upon the school board on the 21st of this month approving the lease. We don't normally approve 16th Section leases unless they've already been first approved by the school board. So, in this case, you're gonna approve it contingent. It will be approved on the 21st, and then the process can proceed. So, that's all I'm asking you to do, is to approve it contingent. If the school board does not approve it, it ain't happening.
Okay.
I'll make them second.
Who made the motion? Steve, Jake?
Steve.
Steve, Jake. Motion by Jake, second by Brad. All first, aye? All opposed.
Item M is a, an amendment to the Rankin County Local Non-Hazard Solid Waste Management Plan for Southern Tire Recycling. You guys have already accepted the application. You've already done your public hearing. You've already closed that public hearing, and now it's appropriate to adopt the resolution. The resolution form should be in your packet. I just need a, a motion to adopt a resolution approving that amendment.
So, move.
Second by Jake, second by Daniel. All first, aye? All opposed.
I do have a question about, do we change who's picking them up?
Okay.
All right.
Item N, pardon me, is authority for the Board President to execute change order number 12 for the Rankin County Court Justice Center construction contract. This is the final change order that addresses all claims for time and money on this project. That change order reflects the liquidated damages portion of the contract, which is $229,500 in liquidated damages. two hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars in liquidated damages. That, all you're doing is acknowledging and, and getting the board president to execute the change order and close out the documentation. Next item is about warranty stuff. I see the look on your face, Jerry. Uh, Jake?
Well, the judge just told me last week, we got some issues with some water.
I heard it was a leak, sir.
Okay.
That's the next item.
All right.
Jason, what we want to do here?
Just make a motion to authorize the execution of change order number twelve.
All right. Motion by Jake, second by Daniel, all favors, ah, all opposed.
Item, I've lost track. Oh.
Hands out, Jake.
It's an acknowledgement. Acknowledgement of receipt of architect's report related to the one-year warranty review for the Rankin County Chancery Justice Center. Architect's report, as well as the county administrator's notes and photographs, are believed to capture each of the known warranty issues that require correction as per the contractor's warranty obligations set forth in the general contractor agreement. General contractor has been notified of each and every issue reflected and has been instructed to make corrections, repairs, and replacements as noted. You look at the report that was prepared by Mr. Franco, you will see a number of issues that are referenced there. Item number twenty, Mr. Bishop?
Yep, that is it.
All right.
I suppose.
Well, I mean, if, if we issue the check, how we going to hold on, hold the fee to the fire to get it done?
They're obligated under the warranty, under the warranty of the contract. It's a breach of contract if they don't correct these issues and it's a continuing obligation until they're corrected.
Hey, that's the one thing, I know it says one-year warranty. Do we have a timeframe on these fix in this stuff? I mean, like, I know we're going to cut the check to them and they'll go to Tahiti for a month or two to enjoy their time.
Yes, sir.
But do we have a timeframe which this has got to be done? We give them a month, two weeks, two days, two hours?
Well, they can't wait the last month of the year.
We do, we didn't give them time. We indicated that these, these issues need to be corrected immediately. There is not a.
What, what is, what do we have to hold the fee to the fire though?
Whatever this board indicates.
Well, I guess that's kind of my, my only problem with it was is time doesn't seem to be something that matters to them, just based on all the requests and all for extension. So with time not being one of their considering factors, I want it to be one of mine, for sure, is that we at least, and I don't know what that, the suitable timeframe we should put on these things, or, I know things are hard to get, equipment's hard to get, materials, things like that, but I would like to have maybe Keith explore that and see.
Well, they're already working on some of the issues.
Okay. I'm saying, if we come back two years from now and, no, this is still not done.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I.
You'll be hearing from the judges way before then. My thought would be that we give them sixty days to finish out, and we can paper this up, I'll just write Carl and tell him, we won't attract. If this, if all of these have not been addressed within sixty days, we want to know what's left to be addressed. And then the board has the option at that point to, to literally take them to court on the warranty.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, to say at least, if they're not done in sixty days, they give you a hard answer on why. I'm not saying it has to be done, but they can tell you why. And the other thing, I just want to double check also is that we've talked to the judges and Larry and they've seen the list and they feel like we've got everything boxed into this.
I think, I think we, we had some help during the warranty walkthrough at points.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, that'd be my only thing is put it, and I like the sixty-day deal. It doesn't have to be hard on the sixty, but in sixty, you better get an answer why this isn't the.
Yeah, item twenty is an interesting issue because it's still exploratory in nature. We know we have a leak issue, nobody knows where it's coming from. So twenty actually refers to a test, you see that hose test, it's listed there, Daniel?
Yeah.
That, that's basically for us to try to figure out where's this water coming from. We think we may know, but there's three or four different possibilities for it, we got to nail that down. So we'd need a little bit of time to, for that one in particular, we need a little bit of time to figure out where's it come from so we can stop it.
Brad, how we get all this water just appear? Everybody, I mean, you go get water appear, we can't figure out where it came from.
Okay.
Okay.
So, uh, did we, did we take action? I need a motion to acknowledge the warranty report.
All right. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Cross.
And add that letter deal in there, right?
Yeah, and put a timeframe of sixty days.
Okay.
We will communicate that to the architect and ask that it be communicated to the general contractor.
Any more discussion? Not all favors, ah, all opposed. Okay?
I think the final pay application will be addressed in key sections, so that's to be.
All right. Mr. Bass, standing in for Mr. Parker, which, if you didn't know, Mr. Parker is attending a funeral, a close friend of ours passed away and I wish I could have made it, so that's why he's not here.
Thank y'all, gentlemen. The first thing I have is a request and authority to advertise the North Shore Causeway Bridge guardrail improvements. The temp, the temporary entrainments are in place, but this would be an advertisement for, um, construction of the permanent guardrail entrainments.
Is this the same woman trying to get reimbursement on? Okay.
Yeah, I'll make that motion approved.
Motion approved by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jake, all favors, ah, all opposed.
Next is Liberty Landing Phase One. We're requesting approval of preliminary and final plat, um, developer has a financial responsibility in the amount of sixty-two thousand, um, two hundred and fifty dollars. And that is on Stump Ridge Road, um, is gravel between lots seven and fourteen, and that financial responsibility is, is a cost of a three inches, three inches of asphalt on that gravel portion.
Motion.
Second.
Approved by Steve, second by Daniel, all favors, ah, all opposed.
Next, we're asking for approval of the preliminary and final plat for Liberty Landing Phase Two. Um, the financial responsibility on that is forty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that is for three inches of asphalt on the gravel portion of Stump Ridge Road that is beyond Phase One.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Brad, second by Jake, all opposed, ah, all opposed.
Next, we wanted to, I wanted to discuss, um, the ER BRF projects, which is our state bridge, um, bridge funding. The state is, has eighty-nine million dollars there set aside for bridges. Um, you know, we applied for several projects in two thousand and eighteen that none got funded.
Right.
Um, there's still, from what I'm understanding, there's still a hundred and fifty bridges that are closed in the state. So we're expecting that most and not all of that money will go to those bridges, but there are two in Rankin County that would, that we think would have the best chance. One would be on the Erlich Road, um, bridge, and the other one would be on Midway. That those two would be the, would have the best chance of getting any kind of funding.
I make the motion, we submit those two.
All right. Motion to submit those two by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? All I'd say is that Erlich Road, that's the one that the school bus, really nice, supposed to be crossing, and it's the only way in and only way out, one way. But, so that's, that's a good one. All right. All favors, ah, all opposed.
I, I want you guys to, with me, focus, that is all state money, has nothing to do with federal money.
Right.
Totally interior to state-funded and.
Is your sixty days up?
Probably, yes, sir. It's getting close. Actually, I, I've still got some time, Jay. August, it, it's ticking very fast, but I'm, we're locked in on August two to, to talk to you guys.
Well, he wants his sixty days before we start, you know, piling with projects.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I thought that ran out. We pile the projects.
I'm sorry. Uh, I'm, I'm going to claim all sixty of my sixty, okay?
You're not asking for an extension, are you?
No, sir. Actually, if I could, let me clarify one thing, since Jay brought it up.
No, we're not getting, we're not getting.
That, that action happened on July the sixth, by the way, and August two is actually only fifty-six days, so I, I just want to point that out.
Craig's Lay, Craig's Lay Pro Tim down here on the other end.
By August two, we intend to have something for you guys to talk about. I don't want y'all to get confused as, like I do, that ERBR money has anything to do with the federal money. It does not.
Okay.
That's all state stuff. It's just like in two thousand and eighteen, Chris was correct, we submitted good projects, should have been funded, didn't get funded. Why? Because there's bigger problems apparently all over the state elsewhere and they decided they needed help. And since we take care of our business, apparently they felt like it'd be okay just to not let us be a part of their little handout money routine. I, I don't know, we take care of our business. You would, you would think that they would look at us and say, well, here's a little something extra to help y'all since you're doing a good job.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, but it's not the way it works. And so we, we are confident, thank you for submitting these two. We're fairly confident we have very low probability of getting anything out of this, out of this mechanism.
So on, uh, just real quick, uh, so you're mulling over your sixty days, are you thinking about air quality?
Water quality.
What, there's not any air quality in there?
There's not. Uh, and, uh, in, in fact, there's no reference to air quality at all. That is purely EPA. Uh, so the connections that we have on rescue plan funds, the way that, that it is structured.
I just had a consultant hit me up about it.
Yes, sir. I, I'm not surprised. We've had a lot of folks come along in recent days, giving free advice on what we ought to do with that money. It's uncanny. They come from everywhere.
Under additional business, I have also one.
Yes, sir. And so we've, we're, we're working through the process. Our focus now, Jay, really relates to the Clean Water Act.
All right. I'll give you a second.
That was adopted in nineteen seventy-two. And so we'll, we'll have much more to say about that soon.
Hey, Chris, I, I enjoy you being here.
Thank you.
But would you ask Tim two things and he'll probably hear it at some point if he listens to this thing, but, uh, I want to double check back kind of where we're at on, uh, our flooding a few more.
Okay.
So I know we've gone through, we're still doing studies and looking, want to be sure we hadn't forgot about that. And then, uh, just be sure he follows up on that for me. And we can touch base at some other point, but you would pass the word to him, I just want.
Well, I can give you some, you know, we've, we've done some estimates on what it's going to take, so, you know, if you want to.
Yeah, I just want to sit down and just be sure we get, keep that up on the burners because I know we're still having those flooding issues that come up.
Sure.
And we stocked that little paving thing we were going to do just because my stomach got upset about it, you know, so I just want to keep that on the burner.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sure.
All right. Mr. Hicks, you waited patiently.
Good morning.
Morning.
Still morning. Item A is the authority for us, us to obtain quotes for the lease purchase financing of two additional Kenworth dump trucks. There'll be a one-year lease with a buyback of one forty-three four, this is for the road department.
Yep, second.
Approved by Jake, second by Daniel, all favors, ah, all opposed.
All right. And I almost hate to bring the next one up, but, um, item B is the ratification. We all know what that means, the issuance of the check.
I mean, you already gave it to him.
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. Second.
I like to hold that fifty-seven thousand dollars. It's hard.
It's already gone.
It's all gone. It's all gone.
You got a hard time getting it finished. All right. Motion was, was it Daniel?
Yeah, Jay, I second that request first.
Second. Motion by Jake, second by Daniel, all favors, ah, all opposed.
And then, finishing up the new courthouse, item C is the authority to page AH&amp;H Architects. And please remember, this is pretty much their invoice.
For the whole thing?
For.
No.
When it should have been completed through the current time, uh, in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand.
So we got more coming? Oh, for all the additional time?
Yes, sir.
How much more?
Uh, this is what your liquidated damages in part were based on, were to cover the expenses, the additional expenses of the architect.
How, do you know how much more were coming?
This is up to date through, through the current period.
Oh, right now?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. All right. Cool.
I, I don't think we're going to have.
Much more.
Well, if we get any more, I don't think it'll be significant.
Okay.
I think it'll be related to the warranty stuff that they're having to continue to deal with, but that should be fairly minimal.
All right.
Your, your liquidated damages of two twenty-nine plus was designed to cover the additional architect costs. Okay?
So move.
Yeah, second.
All right. Motion by Jake, second by Daniel, all favors, ah, all opposed.
All right. Item D, discussion of and potential action to engage a mechanical engineer to review the HVAC system in the justice center and provide us with some, I guess, direction on that. We have a building that's twenty-five plus years old. The, uh, it has a single chiller unit that controls the air system in the building and this is strictly a, well, initially it was just a preventative measure, let's, a proactive measure step on our part to make sure we don't walk in one day and not have the judges cool or heated based on their need. We actually, this week, the system went down, um, as an example of how old it is. We were able to get it back online, uh, but it's a very old system. We just want to see with a system that expensive and that large and, you know, if, if we need to address some situations with it, whether it be replace it, upgrade the current one. And I'd like to get a mechanical engineer in there to look at what our options are.
And we need engineer, we can't just get a salesman for one of these system companies?
A salesman's going to sell you a new unit? I don't know if we're there.
Well, I'm pretty sure you bring an engineer, he going to sell us a new unit, too.
Well, this is going to be a non HVAC.
We just going to pay more.
Yeah. This is going to be someone that doesn't work for, um, someone that sells the systems.
Okay. All right.
And, and off the top of my head, the estimate was around twenty-five hundred dollars to, to look at the system and, and give us some options on how to proceed.
All right. So move. Second.
All right. Motion by Jake, second by Daniel, all favors, ah, all opposed.
All right. And, uh, the last thing, just a, a quick update on the, the upcoming budget. To calm, calm you down, everything, revenues for the current year are, everything's on track, everything's looking good. Um, for, we're looking at our next meeting, July twenty-ninth is going to start actually discussion of the budget. Uh, so we've set aside, or we ask you to set aside July twenty-ninth.
I think so. You're running sure we're going to be here.
Yeah. And, uh, and also August second, and if we need to add additional days, I, we'll, we'll Yeah, and, uh, and also August second, and if we need to add additional days, I, we'll, we'll decide at that time to get into the budget process and everything.
The, uh, RFP for our remodeling our courthouse?
Yes, sir.
Will you let me know when it's ready?
It went out Wednesday.
Will you just give me a copy of it? So I could forward it over to some contractors?
I think JHNH has that, yeah, I'll get that.
Thank you.
Are, are we, you talking about the remodeling of?
Yes.
The renovation of the.
Community.
Old Chancery building?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will do that. So, anything else you need from me?
No, I have something else on additional business.
Hey, Jay.
Yes, sir.
They can go on, they can go to Central Biddy and get everything they need.
Well, you just send me the link to it so I can forward it over. Thanks.
All right.
I think Steve had something he wanted to add.
Yeah, I got one too, something else, and Renee.
I had some, I forgot.
I'll write it down, cause I know.
All right, I got, well, I'll start out. You wanna go see with me?
I don't mind, I don't mind.
Let me just, let me just throw that, Renee, um, I asked Renee to kinda be updated on this, here it is. Um, I got a gentleman, Renee, you correct me if I'm wrong, what I've heard, um, they replaced a mobile home on Basswood Lane. Uh, this, anyway, it took out one, all it is, just kill the, uh, breaker. Took out one, put another in, the one they put in's a little smaller than the one they had in. And, uh, they hooked it right up. Um, the mobile home company that brought it in there was, uh, Southern Colonial Homes out of Hattiesburg. Well, they brought it in, they, they knew better, but the gentleman, and this guy, I know these people, I don't think they, they didn't know any different. They thought, all I gotta do, since I can just kill my power here, by a breaker, not have to pull the meter or nothing. So we brought it in and put it up. Well, he comes over here to do the right thing and register it, whatever, and I think then it, that's when he finds out, man, you have messed up real bad. And, you know, um, but my thing is the, the, uh, the movers are the ones, really, the ones that sold the home and moved it in there, they're the ones that screwed him up. And, uh, they, you know, they, I think, he's not in mind paying the fee, but he, he was asking about the doubling, which would be five-hundred dollars. And he knows he's gotta get to Health Department, and I said, well, that's, that's nothing to do with me, that'd be the Health Department, which I don't see, it's gonna be a problem, probably because it's a smaller one than was in there. So, now, anything else you can add, I'm way off on.
Uh, that was pretty accurate, I think, on what happened, you know, however, he should have had his permit, uh, before it was moved. And he didn't.
I see, that's what he said.
He's gonna have to get that.
He didn't, he didn't think he, he didn't realize that, because he wasn't, all he's doing is taking, like you said, he didn't have to do anything with power, other than just turn the breaker on. And, uh, put it in there, so he didn't, he didn't really realize that, it's not something he, he does, obviously, uh, on a regular basis, so. Anyway, uh, my thing is, how can we get, get at the, uh, do, do we have something we can go at the movers' fault?
Yes, sir, our, our, our ordinance that requires.
Stop saying.
Obligates the owner of the unit, seller of the unit, and the transporter of the unit. So I would propose that I get the information from the seller, the, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Uh, we've done this in the past, by the way.
I thought so.
Weird issue demands that they pay the fines that are associated, y'all set the fines in your ordinance. So let's find, uh, and, uh, what that does is it promotes them being careful to follow our process. Like, everybody is on notice, Renee has done a great job.
And he'll tell everybody.
I know, I know.
Sellers, and as many of the transporters, we can find, they all know that we have an ordinance that requires a permit before they.
Right.
Before they locate, they know that.
But, and I've heard their name, I think, before, I think this sounds familiar.
We have found, and I'm pretty sure we've found some folks who have it where.
We have.
And so, we, we, that, that is the repercussion, we find.
All right.
Did they pay?
Uh, we, we've had, um, some.
The thing with that is generally, the people end up paying.
Yeah.
Now, whether they get it back from the dealer or not, I don't know, but, um, you know, a lot of them are just ready to get their power on, so they'll pay it.
Well, really. They were gonna pay it either way, because the guy's on the trailer, just gonna put it on the end of it.
But.
Well, our fine is nothing but the permit, right?
Yes.
Our fine is nothing but the permit.
Double.
No, which, it's a five-hundred dollar fee for moving it without.
Okay, we, we do actually have one there, okay, good.
So what, what is, is what, five-hundred dollars?
I don't.
It is.
I'm at a disagreement.
Well, would it just been two-fifty to start with? I mean, I mean.
Them, uh, the new ordinance fines them five-hundred dollars, and then they would pay the permit fee.
What's the original cost of?
Of a permit, a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars.
Yeah, I thought that was our fine. We have done it, there's some instances we do that.
Yeah, on building, you know, for.
See, I thought we just doubled it, so I was thinking, I was thinking it was two-fifty and we doubled it.
We have an ordinance now.
We, we've never triggered it, but your ordinance actually states that if y'all.
We could make them pull it out.
They have to actually come get it and take it out of the county and come back. Well, when you look at that from a practical standpoint, that's hard.
Yeah, his daughter, his daughter lives in it.
Yeah, you know, the, the owner of the unit doesn't want it jerked off again, you know, they don't want to stay where it is and just pay fine.
Right.
Uh, I, I counsel, let's go after these sellers, because they're the ones, they should, in Hattiesburg, when they find out it's going to a piece of property in Rankin, they ought to pick up the phone, call it as often as the very first thing.
Yeah, I mean, I can see where he, he didn't think he did anything wrong, but he came here gonna register it, if he wanted to be quiet, he just shut up.
We told them that, and told them that, and sent them copies of the ordinance, and had conversations with them about it, and, and.
In fact, if he had come in here, we'd never known it. Down Basswood Lane where it is, it's, you'd never even know it happened.
Oh, yeah, did they haul out the oval?
Huh? Yeah, yeah. And I asked him about the size, and he said, actually, it's, he gave me the numbers, I don't remember, but it's a little smaller than the one they took out. Cause I said, I was asking about the con- a question the Health Department may say, well, it's, it's bigger than what was in there, and he said, I doubt it's gonna, that one's gonna matter, cause it's smaller. But, so I guess all I'm trying to see, help him out some way, I'd like to go after them, I hate to see him have to pay the five-hundred.
What do you wanna do?
Well, I'd like them to pay, have to go get a permit, that's obvious.
Yeah.
But I kinda like to hold off on making him pay the five-hundred till, and see what we get out of them.
We will, uh, I'm, I'm fine with.
Let's chase them, let's just chase them for a while.
Huh?
They finance them?
I don't, I don't know how to get into that.
Just, let's just put our efforts toward the guy that hauled it in, and let's see where we go, and.
The, the seller and the guy that hauled it in, right?
Yeah.
He move a homes, folks, bringing them in.
Put Dwayne on it, he'll get it.
All right, well, I, I appreciate that, let's just, let's try that. I mean, he, he's fine paying a permit, I mean, like, and honestly, I believe him.
I do believe.
I was thinking, I'm playing.
He's not the first one that's been done this way.
Well, and, and like I said, if he hadn't come in and registered, we'd never, never even know.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, Steve.
Okay, all right, that's all.
There's no reason to vote on that, is there? Now, we just.
No, okay.
Just let them.
What you got, Steve?
I.
Yeah?
All right.
Y'all, y'all instructed Renee to meet the handle, we'll handle.
Okay, all right.
The next, I have, uh, on this cares money that we have, and we don't know what we can do with it.
Rescue.
Rescue, yeah. Uh.
Go ahead.
We have, the county owns a hospital. Right down the road, and it's, it's really a nice hospital, and place to go and things, but they must be limited somewhat in their resources, and for whatever reason, uh, it's not really, I don't know why, it's never maximized its potential, and I think that the lease is coming up soon, and stuff. I would like to take some of that money, and this would help the whole county for years, and talk to prospective, uh, leasees, leasees, which one is it? Uh, and see what it would take to put this hospital in the real market for, I don't know, I don't wanna name any names, but for somebody that wants to come in, renovate, do the things that would, that they would want done, for them to sign a contract, and really have a hospital that people trust and go to. I, I don't know if that's ten million or fifteen million, but I don't, you know, sit on our hands and end up sending that money back to Jackson, and they'll use it, uh, you know, on stuff that we can't use it on. So, I would sure like somebody, a team to explore, uh, what needs to be done to renovate that, to get it appealing to some larger hospitals, or even the one we have now, and the worst thing is for it to go vacant.
Yes, sir. The, uh, it's interesting, the, the current, uh, lease arrangement that is in place, has been in place since nineteen ninety-six. Uh, the, uh, the tenant, if you will, at the time, Health Management Associates prepaid rent in the amount of, I think it was thirty million dollars. It actually was in excess of thirty million, or thirty-four million. Uh, the, so that's a pretty big lick of prepaid rent, which covered a number of years of the lease term. I wanna say at least twenty, possibly slightly more than that, I don't recall, sir.
If it's ninety-six, it'd be twenty-five years.
Yes, sir, this is a thirty-year lease, it expires in, uh, twenty-twenty-five, I believe. And so, we're, we're, basically, we're in the neighborhood of about four to five years remaining on the lease term with, with the underlying tenant, which has morphed over time. Health Management Associates, Community Health Systems, an outfit out of Miami that was involved at some point, it's now in the Merit Health System, which is a part of Community Health Systems out of Nashville. Uh, and so, uh, that, there is a tenant occupying the space under a lease that provides access, use, unencumbered, unfettered access for the entirety of the lease term. How that complicates, uh, the, the thought process of providing for a renovation at county expense and, and whatnot, it is our property. But, but it complicates the unfettered use of the property by the current tenant, which, it's an operational hospital. We can quibble about how effectively it's been utilized.
I'm not against the people that's there, if they wanna stay, and I just wanted to make it appealing to the people and making.
Yes, understood.
We will use it.
Merit Health, you know, but.
Yeah, so.
But I'm like you, you don't, I don't know why, you never, I, I, my big family, don't ever think about that, that one, when you go, I need to go to the hospital, I need to, I'd never even think about it, and it's probably closest for so many.
So, um, uh, as delicately as I know how to put it, your staff is very aware of the relatively short-term nature of the lease that is in place.
Yep.
And is very aware that some attention and some thought about what happens next needs to be discussed, and it is being discussed. And if I could suggest that we would like to, um, to have some strategic conversations that could end up being good things. We don't know where tho- they'll go, they're totally unofficial, but if we could have an opportunity to have some of those conversations, we might be able to get the board up to speed, and it, and it could be, Steve, that it ends up being something like what you're thinking about. And, and I think everybody's desire is that we have a facility for our residents that is not one where ninety percent of the time folks are strongly suggesting that the ambulance keep going.
Yep.
We would all like to be in a day where that becomes a viable option.
Right.
For our folks, and, and we get that, and that, that's kinda the direction we're trying to go here, but we, uh, I think, unfortunately, I think it's a little premature to talk about, if I could say this about the rescue piece of that. Uh, I think it's highly unlikely that, that the rescue money that we're currently holding could be used for that purpose. I think it's highly unlikely. I'm not saying that we can't, I'm saying that based on my limited review and what I know at this stage, that would be unlikely that we could, we could permissibly use it. Now, there may be a way, a- and this board could, again, I'm still claiming my full sixty days, but I think this board could say, hey, Craig, appreciate you taking sixty days, but you just wasted our time, and we don't like anything you just put on the table, so find something else. I, I think at that point in time, we gotta, we gotta revisit everything, okay?
I don't know if it qualifies, somebody that has a much better financial mind than myself told me it would.
Okay.
But I don't know, I don't have any.
We're getting that a lot.
We're getting that a lot, I got a.
Especially for people that represent defined interests, that, they are absolutely one-hundred percent certain that we can.
Yeah.
But I haven't run into any of those yet who are willing to put their name on a piece of paper.
Yeah.
That says.
Right.
I guarantee you, you can.
Yeah.
So, we're having to be really careful, and, uh, not to put too fine a point on it, uh, and you guys already know this, but we, we are literally in a situation, and I wanna say this publicly so that the public knows what we're having to deal with. We're in a situation where the federal government has sent us money, has set up a set of rules about what we can do with it, called those rules interim, has not yet submitted the final rules, don't know if they're gonna change, don't know what's gonna change, and then they have said, hope you spend it right. Don't bother asking us if you're guessing right, and if you guess wrong, we will come get it back. That's what we're dealing with so far. So, it is total uncertainty at this stage, and we're doing the best we can to try to navigate that with you guys, so thank you for my sixty days.
All right, I make the motion to discuss the need going to the executive session.
All right, motion by Jay, set the need going to the executive session.
Second.
Second by Brad, uh, discuss.
Uh.
All right, all right, set the need, go ahead, all favors, ah.
Ah.
All opposed, okay.
Acquisition of real property and two matters of pending litigation.
Okay, all right.
Contracts in that too?
Sir.
Can we put contracts in that also?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
I, I'll make motion for session for those reasons.
Motion going to executive session by Jay, second by Brad, all favors, ah, all opposed.